I'd like to call the meeting, I'd like to call the order of the meeting, a regular council meeting Tuesday, May 29, 2018. Roll call, please. Mr. Lauer.
Mrs. Merrill.
Present.
Mr. Sligle will be absent tonight. Mr. Arcur.
Here.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
Present.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
We can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting of May 14, 2018.
I'll move we approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of May 14, 2018.
Second.
Any changes, alterations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Six zero.
Uh, six zero. Special reports on the agenda says none, so there are none. Next item on the agenda is audience comments. This is limited to a five-minute opportunity to talk about something that's not on the agenda, and seeing that we have a packed house tonight of chairs.
You take all the hands up there.
I guess you don't want to talk.
I would just like to take this opportunity to mourn, uh, mourn, oh, what, uh, to mourn the passing of a longtime Peterstownship resident, and Frank Sam was also the proprietor of the Atreus Restaurant in Peterstownship. Uh, he is a special place in a lot of residents, I'm sure, of Peterstownship, and Frank will, uh, will sorely be missed, so I just thought I'd just...
Originally from Doravon.
Yeah, originally from Doravon, correct. All right. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, uh, and there's not any unfinished business. Conrad, do you want to speak on an on-agenda item?
Uh, yeah, I could, real quick.
Sure.
Sorry, I'm not really prepared as usual, but...
Mr.?
Uh, name Conrad Wallace, 105 Trotwood Drive. Uh, about two weeks ago, I was here, and I stayed in my case. Uh, I received a letter from the township, and really, it doesn't detail enough information. And so, I'd like to hit their facts that they base their decision on. That's number one. Uh, number two, just to help an other man out, Rick, or somebody, Just Above Road is still terrible. Sienna Trail Road between, uh, Hill Place and Springdale is a disgrace. Now, I understand it's supposed to be repaved this summer, but I mean, it's been this way for five, six, seven months. I think it's time somebody gets out there and does something. So, I'd like to know, on that issue, if the township has contacted the state about Just Above Road, and what their answer was.
I have contacted them, spoke with the, uh, the maintenance supervisor for this district. There's a contract out, and that work should be done, um, within a week or two.
Oh, that's really good news. And what about, uh, Sienna Trail, between that section?
We're hoping that it can be paved this year. We'll see how the paving contract goes. It's been on the watch list for a couple of years.
Boy, I know, but in those couple of years, market's deteriorated.
Yeah, and has a lot of, as have a lot of other roads. We have a three-year plan that we develop every three years, and we try to pretty much stick to that.
Well, sometimes you have to...
So, long and short of it is, it's, it was bid as an alternate this year. Um, we're gonna try to fit it in, assuming the rest of the program goes okay, and we don't have any other overtures on any of the other roads that we can, we can fit that one in.
Well, when I talked to the Public Works Department, oh, about a month ago, uh, they told me that it's on the schedule, your way to, Peterstownship is waiting for, uh, another township to lend them a paving machine. Is that where we're at still?
No, we, we were thinking about doing that. We have an in-house paving program where we pay, but we try to stick pretty much to parking lots instead of public roads. So, uh, the bids came in pretty favorably this year to have our contractor do that, Youngblood Paving, so I think we're gonna try to fit that in rather than have public work do that.
Well, I know that's what you didn't think I was gonna talk about, but we still have my, my fence issue, the water drainies issue, and I would like to know this. I would like to either put this on the agenda, or ask right now for a vote of the councilmen to tell me if they agree with the letter that was drafted and signed, I think, by Mr. Law.
I mean...
Okay?
So... The council doesn't have that letter, but I can supply that, there's a little bit of...
Okay, 'cause I'd like to know where we are with that, 'cause that's, uh, important to me.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Conrad. Sir.
All right. Uh, unfinished business, none. Uh, we'll move on to, to new business, and first item on the agenda is request from South Hills Lincoln Mercury for a special permit for a tent sale. This is an annual...
Annual event.
Issue for, uh, a request by South Hills. I, I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
I, I have a question. It, it looks like it's gonna be twenty-something days long, is that, is that within...
That's what it's been in the past, yeah.
Okay, so it's not like the sign thing where it's, you know, two weeks?
No.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Six to zero. Next item on the agenda is authorization of traffic counts on Stone Brook Drive under the traffic calming policy.
Yes, we have a valid petition in, actually, it's Abington and Stone Brook, um, and the next step in that process is for council to authorize traffic counts to be done. They do this on an hourly basis, so I would propose that we do that. The one thing about the traffic that, if you, if you read the letter, the traffic they're concerned about, and I can understand this, is traffic related to the use of the church. So, where they're, where they're indicating they believe there's a problem is on Sundays, Saturdays, and Wednesday night with CCD. So, I think our, our, we should make sure that those traffic counts include those time periods.
It should also include, I mean, I live on that street, so it, the, the other time it's really bad is, um, whenever they have CCD.
Yeah.
I mean, those people, like, just drive like a bat out of hell. I don't think Sunday's that bad, because there's so many cars that, you know, if one person goes the speed limit, it, it sort of keeps everything else, but that CCD, man, they're just blown out of...
Well, and see, what I don't know is, and I had to check with the...
And I don't even know if they still have them now.
I don't know whether CCD continues after school is done.
No, it's done.
So, it might be, and I realize this is gonna, we're gonna ask people to be patient, but it might be worth waiting till September to do the traffic council you can get.
Well, I, I can tell you that, that there was a, uh, there was an increased presence of police vehicles last week, I believe. I mean, almost every time I looked at my door, I saw a police car going up or down the street, and, uh, it did appear, like, when I went out on Sunday, when Mass was letting out, I did notice that there were a lot of cars coming down there, and none of them were, uh, in my opinion, exceeding the speed limit, and I don't know whether that was a, a direct correlation to the police presence. Uh, plus, they had some kind of a counter up there already or something, uh...
Enrad.
What was it? Anybody?
They, they deployed the Enrad that they purchased this year. It's electronic non-radar, uh, speed detection device.
I don't know if they wrote any tickets, I didn't see them, but...
They did not.
It seemed to slow a lot of people down.
Yeah, see, in fact, Chief Grimes has asked, uh, to have, we have an officer, one of the new corporals, who has, uh, taken upon himself to, um, manage our, um, request for traffic enforcement, and that's actually been working out well, both in terms of its effect and also its relationship with neighbors. Um, at some point in time, I'd like to have Corporal Davis come in and explain what's going on, and my guess is...
It seemed like it worked.
That's what you see.
I saw the effect, that they see the police, also, yeah.
Yeah. I, I can tell you that, I, I just, I can't believe that there's a lot of speeding on Abington, because it's so short, and then you got that curve.
Yeah.
And then, like, Stone Brook is pretty level and straight, till you get to the very end, and, uh, that map doesn't do it justice, because that bend at the very end there, uh, is not like a forty-five degree angle, it's like a ninety-degree angle, and so you almost have to slow down there. Uh, and, and I know why they're concerned, because I know, like, the, there's a couple residents on my street that live in close proximity to me, who have, um, uh, at least one child each that, uh, is a little bit developmentally, um, challenged, for lack of a better word, and they're, they're really afraid that, uh, you know, obviously, for obviously, it's, I noticed they put a sign up that said, "Watch for children," or something, coming from, like, near Mike's house.
Yes.
Coming towards the rectory, but, and then they have one, but it's way down at the corner of Abington, which I, I don't think is a good place for it, but, uh, 'cause it seems to be, like, two or three houses before me, and two and three houses past me, so that, that seems to be the, the area in controversy.
Would you agree, though, waiting till CCD's back in session makes sense, or...
Uh, as long as, I mean, I would think as long as you would keep up some sort of police presence, I think it, it would help. Um, I'm not saying after they do as much as they did, but, like, some kind of police presence, maybe just after Mass, have somebody sitting, sitting there after the Masses, having somebody sit there, but...
Praise God.
Uh, it does make sense, because normally, there's not a lot of traffic on that road it, other than church and CCD, like I said, so I, I would think that it, it would not be a, a really good count without trying to get those two days, and...
Well, yeah, well, let me communicate...
It seems like we should do it toward, with CCDs and stuff.
Oh, yeah, I, I definitely, because, I mean, my wife's the one I was talking to her about, and she was like, "That's the worst one," according to her, so...
Well, your, your former manager, Michael, did call me today at five o'clock, 'cause he was looking at the agenda and the manager's report, and he wanted to point out to me that we actually did traffic counts on this road before, that didn't qualify, so...
I didn't think it would qualify, and I, I think it would be really difficult.
It did not qualify.
I don't think it would qualify anyway, even, even, forget about the number, I think, just the speed, I don't think that there's anybody going that fast, but I, I, uh, you know, maybe we could, uh, you know, put one of them little things up that say, "Hey, you're speeding," or, you know, I'm talking about?
Yep.
But, yeah, that makes more sense to maybe wait till we get CCD.
Yeah, I would agree.
All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize traffic counts on Stone Brook Drive under the traffic calming policy. Such counts to take place during the second half of September of 2018.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Six to zero.
Just make sure that we get some presence up there in the interim. Thank you.
Next is, uh, award bid for installation of carpet in the Peterstownship Library.
Um, within the budget, there was an appropriation of eighty thousand dollars for renovation work at the library. Um, one of the things we were able to do over, over the winter is to use Public Works employees to do the painting that was, uh, to be included, so we didn't contract that out. Um, we did accept bids on May 22 for the carpeting. The low bidder is Steinberger Floors, forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. We've used this company before, uh, with a, a fair amount of success, so it's gonna be my recommendation that council were to contract the Steinberger Floors at the amount of forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll make a motion that we award the carpeting contract to Steinberger Floors at, for forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second that motion, but I do have a clarifying question. Mr. Jerosky said that we asked for an alternate to do the work at night, and none of the bidders replied. So, what did, what did you conclude from that?
What, there was, the question was, was there a difference in price? And the answer was, there wasn't a difference in price, so this work will be scheduled when the library's not open.
Okay, that was my clarifying.
Not open?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be scheduled on off-hours.
Okay, so the price will be the same for the...
Are they open on Sundays?
Yes, uh, the summer they are not.
Oh, that would be a good day, but then they probably wouldn't want to do that.
Okay.
All right.
Yes.
So, we have a, um, motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That's also six to zero. Next item on the agenda, authorize appropriate officials to execute an agreement with the Peterstownship School District, establishing terms and conditions related to school resource officers.
Um, as councils aware, we, um, we, the police department and myself have been meeting with the school district administration. Um, there's a real interest in expanding, um, the school resource officer program to the middle school, and so what is in front of you tonight is an agreement that allows that to, to be accomplished. The effect is the same as it was before. In essence, the school district will be paying for those, those officers, uh, during the school year, during the summer, the township will assume responsibility for that. There are two minor changes to the agreement that were proposed by the school district after this was sent to council. I have a, I don't have a problem, um, with either of them, if in fact, uh, and we can clarify the one. The first is, they want to make sure that the officer has the clearances needed to be in the school. Well, quite frankly, if he couldn't have those clearances, he wouldn't be a police officer. So, the, the second thing is, they want, um, the ability, um, uh, prior to someone being in the school, to sit down and be able to interview and discuss, uh, and make a recommendation to the township with regard to the, uh, to the officer. I don't have a problem with that, except, um, I just think we need to clarify in, in the, uh, the language in the agreement, um, that we're asking to execute indicates that the, that the decision with regard to the assignment of an officer as a school resource officer rests solely with the chief of police. He's an officer of the police department, how officers get assigned is up to the chief, and so...
So, you just want to make it clear that...
Yes.
They can have that input, but that the ultimate decision is for the chief.
Right. And, and having talked to, uh, Mr. Ryle, he does not have a problem with that, and so...
How many officers are, do they, are we hiring? I thought we was hiring one.
We are hiring, um, what you're gonna do is take one of the existing officers, and he'll be in the, uh, school, we'll be hiring an officer to replace that officer.
Okay, so the, the existing officer's gonna be in there, uh, starting...
September.
Oh, it's gonna start September?
Yes.
Okay. And then we're gonna hire a new officer to replace.
Yes.
And as, I remember when we talked about this before, we're not stuck, like, if for some reason they didn't want the officer anymore, who knows, maybe they'll, you know...
One, I find it...
Maybe RoboCop, the common reality, and...
I, I, quite frankly, the way things are, I don't, I find it hard to believe that we're gonna go back from that, but if in fact you did, and, um, the township's staffing was such that we had an extra officer, you always have the ability to lay somebody off.
I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize, uh, the, uh, appropriate officials to execute an agreement with the school district, establishing the terms and conditions related to school resource officers, uh, with the modification that was proposed by Mr. Lauer, and, uh, any agreement being subject to solicitor's approval, review, and approval.
Second.
Uh, may I ask a dumb question here? Do, do we have metal detectors at, at, at the high school? Do they have...
The school, I don't believe that, I know this, the school district does not have metal detectors, I believe.
Not in the school.
Is there a reason why that wouldn't seem to be a, a, another level deterrent?
That would be a question that'd pose to the, um, to the school board, you know, the, the reality is that the level of security and the means of security is really an issue for the school board to decide.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Plus, that would, that wouldn't protect against, I mean, it would protect against students, but it wouldn't protect them against, you know, some idiot coming off the street with a fire on.
Yeah.
Well, the Peterstownship Police Department and the Department have talked to the school district at length.
Yes.
And they have been working on a very comprehensive safety program for the new school, as well as helping forward for the other ones.
And, and I would give the school district a lot of credit, in that they've been very receptive to the input from both the police department and the fire department in design.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
But, you know, in this last school shooting, if I understand, I mean, the student was able to bring a gun in under his trench coat.
Yes.
And they did have two SROs in that school. Now, they reacted very quickly, and, uh, but still, it's not...
But never quick enough.
It's not, yeah.
It's never quick enough. I mean, that school's big, if you have one, even two people.
Right.
Take you a while to get from point A to point B, and...
All right, we, uh, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That is six to zero. Next item, authorize appropriate officials to execute an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Peterstownship School District, establishing the terms and conditions related to the design and construction of Rolling Hills Drive.
As we've discussed previously, um, it's been the intention of the school district and the township to equally share in the cost of constructing the road that will service the high school and the park. All this agreement does is, um, lay out the terms of that, so...
I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate officials to execute an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Peterstownship School District, establishing terms and conditions related to the design and construction of Rolling Hills Drive.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Lauer.
Yes.
What is the projected cost to do what we're doing? If we did this? Couple million bucks, three million bucks, something like that?
I think our share is gonna be close to that.
Our share would be three million bucks.
Right.
Let, let me ask you another question. If we didn't have the school there, and we were just putting a park in, right? Would we still be required to spend six million dollars to, to improve that intersection and, and roadway and all that? Because, you know, it doesn't seem fair to me, I, I, that we, we should eat half of these costs, when I, I, my gut tells me that, that the reason, what's driving this is the school district, is the school, not so much the park.
Well, where, I might disagree with you is that when the township and the school district decided to acquire this property and to develop it for a ninety-acre community park and a school, I think it's that decision to do this on a joint basis that creates the need for that roadway. And, you know, you, you may be right that if the entire two-hundred acres would be, um, being developed for a park, you may not be creating a public roadway, and you'd be creating driveways, uh, through the park, but that's not, that's not what we decided to do. What we decided to do was to jointly develop a site, and, and I think a public road, given what we're doing, is essential. And so, I, I personally think it's a, it's a, um, it's a fair share. The other thing about it is, and it, and again, it gets back to this idea, we're co-tributants with the school district, so, you know, if, if, if half of the cost is ours and half is theirs, or three-quarters and one-quarter, it doesn't change the fact that the people in this community are gonna pay for the whole thing, so...
That's exactly the point, and I, while I can appreciate Mr. Curie's point, school's in session nine months, the road will be open twelve, and then once the township does develop, whenever that does happen, if we put all the things, the amount of these in there, and then we're hoping to, there will be a lot of traffic. There, you know, people will use it, and there'll be more opportunity for people to be in there, so maybe down the road, maybe at the beginning, it won't be equal, equal as far as township versus school, but at some point in time, and it's, it's, and it'll be a public road, I still think people might come through there to get to the center of the town.
I think it would, but... All right. Frank, anything?
No, I, I was just asking a question.
It's actually a good point. Um, all right, I think we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Five, one.
Does that be closely fifty-fifty?
Yeah.
All right, uh, final, uh, the, uh, under new business on the agenda is the resolution authorizing the township manager to apply for a grant under the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for the purpose of constructing a bicycle trail in Rolling Hills Park.
So, I think, oh, one of the strategies that we need to follow if the park is to develop is to be able to identify grant opportunities, so that we can, uh, somewhat mitigate the cost of developing the park. One of the, one of the unique features of the park is its ability to connect back to, um, Arrowhead Trail, so under this grant, what it would allow us to do is to make that connection back to Arrowhead Trail, as well as to develop, uh, a number of the, um, bicycle trails that are, um, delineated on the master plan, so the, um, what we're proposing is that the application be done in such a way that the township's share would be, um, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, that would go five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant.
Can we put that in for a half a million dollars?
That's what the estimate is from the engineer, and I think what we could do is to make sure that what we're putting in is in, within that budget, because, um, you know, I, I think we need to be able to describe this in, in general master plan kind of terms in the grant applications, but when it comes time to bid this, we need to do it in a fashion that we can stay within that budget.
So, what's being proposed, uh, would be just to connect down to the trail?
No, it's actually to connect down into the trail, plus all of the paved, all of the paved, um, trails that are up above, so it's gonna take it back here, it's gonna go back out this direction as well.
Wow, and you think we can do that for five-hundred thousand?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause you're not, yes.
Okay.
The engineer thinks you can do it for five-hundred thousand.
Yeah.
All right.
Macken, Macken.
Do we have a timeline? Are they going to award this at a certain point?
September is when they're hoping to award this. That's their first scheduled meeting of the Commonwealth Financing Authority. I will tell you that, uh, given the way the Commonwealth Financing Authority is, if one person is not at the meeting, they do not have the meeting.
No.
So, um, depending on who's mad at who politically, it may be a while, but the plan, the, the first plan meeting is September.
I think you should have Mrs. Frank's mother, Mrs. Coe, make cookies.
Yeah.
And they would all show up. And, but when they award it, if they award it, is there a timeline on when the work has to be completed?
There is, uh, generally, I think it's three years. Um, the plan, the plan would be, the initial schedule that, that we put together was to have the design done in nineteen, and then bid for construction of the trail in 2020.
Okay, good. That works, sir. Perfect work.
Knock on wood.
All right, well, I'll, I'll move that we, uh, pass a resolution authorizing the township manager to apply for a grant under the Greenways Trails Recreation Program for the purpose of constructing a bicycle trail in Rolling Hills Park.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Six to zero. All right, next item on the agenda, uh, on the agenda is payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order. I make a motion that we approve the payroll and bills.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions?
I would just like to say, we're spending a lot of money to go around, that's a half-a-million dollars. A lot of big bond payments, and, um, two bond payments, we're still paying cargo, cargo per se.
Salt, yeah.
Salt.
We're, we're buying salt at the cheaper price.
Cool. But there's a lot of money going on this.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor say, uh, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Six zero. Uh, under correspondence, um, letter from Sherry Kalasia from Range Resources, dated May eighth, 2018, notifying Peterstownship, uh, proposed well-drilling operation.
Which is nowhere near us.
So, we're all good?
We're all good.
All right. Anything under reports?
Well, I don't...
Council members?
I have a question, two questions from Mr. Zalander.
Ooh. Ooh.
Sorry, I didn't warn you this, Doug, also. I saw that we're going to put additional parking near Hoffbauer. I don't remember hearing that. Is that the level plot as you turn onto Brutey towards the left? Where people park anyway already?
Yes, yep, we're gonna put, it's probably gonna be like 25 spaces that we can put in there and leave some room for some landscaping and stuff, so. I threw a quick design together and when I worked with Public Works, so probably towards the end of the summer, we'll start construction.
The most you can get will be appreciated by everybody, I'm sure.
Right, and the thought was, we can use the in-house paving program to do that. We've been pretty aggressive on ticketing people for parking on the grass. I think we need to give them an alternative when we can.
First, yeah, at certain times, there are a lot of, there's a lot of vehicles. I did have another question about the pallet pits parking near the trail, and you were talking about the problems there. Is that safe there? I mean, people are still using it, I was surprised.
Yeah, I mean, that gabion basket wall that kind of supported the end of the lot there against the creek, that's been teetering for a while, and then in all the floods that we had in February, it kind of gave way, so we had the jumbo blocks, actually, that we took out of Hidden Valley, hauled down there when we built the wall. So it's Public Works intent to use those to reestablish that edge line there on the park and walk, but we need a DEP permit before we can do that, so we submitted for that. We're hoping that sometime in the summer, we'll get that when it's dry. Public Works wants to do the stream relocation stuff when it's dry, to do that work.
It's unfortunate that can't be expanded, I'm hoping, because there's a lot of people who use that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, miscellaneous.
We just wanted to update you on the status of the Ironwood State's stormwater management plan. You know, we've once again had some of our neighbors there questioning what's happening, and there has been a revised stormwater management plan that has been submitted that will take additional water and place it in pipes as opposed to placing it in the stormwater facility, the stormwater management facilities over there. That's sitting at Gateway Engineers right now. We would assume that in the next week or two, that we'll have an approval to go ahead with that, so.
I think we've got the today.
Did they?
Gateway approved it today.
Oh, so, so the developer has what he needs on the site, so I would assume that this would be happening very shortly. But I don't want to mislead anybody, it is not necessarily going to solve all the problems. You know, the people along Bridge Drive have had wet backyards before this plan, they will continue to have them. If you look at the site, it used, it had a stream channel that got piped, and it still, it still carries water where that stream channel would be, and so I, these people are gonna still have wet backyards, but they will not have, I don't believe. This will resolve the vast majority of whatever they're receiving from Ironwood, so.
Okay.
Hey, can we go back for a second? I have a question about the solicitor's report. I noticed there's a thing in here about reviewing responses to discovery requests and some litigation. Myers Nation?
Yeah, that was the-
Are we a party?
We have outside councils, so all we did was look at, they sent them to us before they sent them out. I think Margolis-
Margolis Edelstein?
Yeah.
What's the, what's the nature of the litigation?
This is a guy who went out early in the morning, spilled coffee on himself when he was tripped in a puddle on East McFarry Road.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Like we talked about.
Yeah.
It's not our road. It's not our road.
I have no idea why the case has continued to rest in discovery when it's not our road. I don't know.
We haven't been able to get out of it yet.
Yeah, they sent us to discovery. We really didn't even look at it, other than just to know that it was going through us.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that, Chuck.
No, no problem.
Wait, he tripped into a puddle while carrying coffee?
Early in the morning.
I remember talking about it.
Yes.
I didn't know that they actually filed suit.
Yes.
Because I thought, once they realized it wasn't our road-
So they actually filed suit, and we told them it wasn't our road.
Oh, okay.
And the case has still progressed to that. But we have insurance carrier on it.
So people just aren't with it until they have that morning cup of joe.
She filed suit against many different people.
All right.
I had another question, since we were talking about the park. Is there a status update on your conversations with Penn Dine about what they think, based on the designs that we are all in agreement we would like to have?
Yes, we had a really productive meeting with Joe Sejour, the district executive for District 12. It was not only with Mr. Sejour, but also all the people who have to approve that plan. And when we got done explaining what it is we were trying to do and why we were trying to do it, Mr. Sejour said, "Well, this makes perfect sense to me, this is a, you know, this is a very good way to go ahead with this." And then he turned to all of his guys and said, "And don't you think this will work?" And so everybody's on board with the concept. Now, having said that, it doesn't mean we don't have to go through the process, and the process isn't quick. And so, but I think we got out of that meeting exactly what we'd hoped, because this is such a novel thing that we're proposing to do. Had it gone the other direction, it would have had to get to Mr. Sejour's approval anyhow. So we're getting ready to move ahead with that. We, our intention is, in the next few weeks, to begin to set up meetings with the neighbors.
Good. On that same topic?
Anyone else?
Since we're so far ahead of the game, on that same topic, what about the why?
I don't know any more than before. We all know that the why is now in bankruptcy, but I don't know, in the long run, that may actually be a plus for the township from the standpoint that they may be in a position to be able to, to, once they get reorganized, to look at this, but I don't know any more than I did before.
This is when we sing "Beautiful Dreamer" to you?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous items? All right, items for the next agenda?
A while back, I'd asked about the Peters Township Sanitary Authority and how they were progressing, and I understand they're supposed to be opening that plant in June, so perhaps we could hear all that, too.
Okay.
All right, seeing nothing else, this meeting, we have executive session?
Yes, we do.
Do you want to meet in our little room back there?
We can meet right here. This'll be quick.
Huh? Right here? All right. This meeting is adjourned.